I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the place of the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Earl walks in late.
Don't let that entrance.
I did coach you at that.
Okay, welcome everyone to the November 2nd meeting. Minutes of the October 19th meeting that we have a motion to approve. Got a motion and second and any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of bills, we have a motion to approve the financial report. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to invite Andy Rodriguez, Director of Human Resources, to come on down to make and discuss the employee of the quarter award. And Dan Hanley, come on down. Maybe the whole team, I guess, right? What do you need, Andy?
Get up there, Brian.
Dan, stay there for your budget memo.
All right, go.
Well, there you go. Worth your time, right? Thank you very much. Here to announce the selection of the employee of the quarter. Get some great submissions. And have Dan here and Brian here behind me because this is actually one of their employees that we selected. Couple citizens wrote some emails about these individuals. I wanted to thank you and your crew for the great condition of the course at Meadow Park last Tuesday. The grass was cut perfectly. The course was beautiful. Our runners appreciate the help of the road crossing that your crew provided. Another citizen email as well. I want to just thank and reach out to you and let you know the conditions of our last meet at Meadow Park were outstanding. Your crew did a fantastic job preparing the course and assisting in all phases of the race today. We are certainly lucky to have such a committed partner and crew that are so dedicated to their jobs. We look forward to our next meet on September 27. And these are just one offs here of a certain time period where they did a terrific job. The ground maintenance crew, I refer them to ground maintenance because it's more than just grass. The ground maintenance crew were nominated, they were selected, they do a terrific job in the town. Sometimes you take, you know, really just don't see or notice, but a lot of people don't, you know, see that that happens, but they do. And they cover a lot of territory. But I just want to congratulate them and also Dan and Brian and their team back here. Gentlemen, come on up. They have been nominated, selected for the employee of the quarter. Jeremy, Denny, and Zach, congratulations. Does you have anything that you want to say?
The park itself is... How many acres is that?
It's about, it's about, so, both sides, about forty acres.
About forty acres. You maintain a forty acre park, the rainwater takes an awful lot of work around there. Take a forty acre park in a flood plain, takes another challenging. Then on top of that, considering all the park's direct activities, having to clean up, and again, the park itself does very well. The fact, you know, Cecil County, your vacation, the cross country meet goes to Meadow Park, speaks a lot for the conditions of the park. You've got all five high schools in Cecil County, why aren't they there? We've got a statue, that's the best place you got down there. Again, speaks to the value of the park, speaks to the following everything, and also speaks to these guys and their opinions. Congratulations on being the employees of the quarter.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Guys, come on down, stand in front of us. I'm getting a nice photo taken. We always want a photo. Lose the cameraman. Zach, thank you. Denny? And Jared with the... Thank you, guys.
Yes, Nigel.
All right. Thanks, guys. All right, turn around here and let's all get a photo. There we go. They're not taking any pictures. No, there we go. Perfect, you're good. You're good. Next time, wear something bright, you know.
They went in the background.
That muted color, you know. Listen, I like to compliment these guys, they don't just cut the park, they cut everything. And everything looks good. You guys do a fantastic job. Appreciate that. I would like to say that a few years ago, we had the vision of making Meadow Park into the area that it is and to make it this cross-country area for many people from the county to enjoy. And we did have that vision, Dan, of having the county meet there. And it's great to hear that they feel that this is one of the best locations for the county meet. Now, I'll ask the team again, I'd love to get the area behind the Big Elk Mall cleaned up so we can have a second route for the cross-country. And right now, we come across the road and we go back to the beautiful ponds in the rear, and I think it's wonderful. But there's also nice to have a second course. And I think that second course needs to be on the other side of the Big Elk Mall. And don't worry about a little footbridge, because in cross-country, they're allowed to run through the water and through the mud. That's part of the game, right? It's part of the game, as long as it's not up to their neck, but it's okay if they can cause that little bit of a stream. That makes it exciting. So you guys, I'm putting it in your hands, use the vision to make this thing happen because we want to get that second course up. But fantastic job as always. Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, yes, yes. Andy, when you got the floors, anything you want to bring up to date? Anything about Paycor, anything about, anything's going on?
Paycor's going very well. I mean, we had some hiccups at the beginning, but it's going very well. Trying to think of what else right now. Town administrator and the directors are working with wider benefits group. Our next project is to do a reset for the retirement services, like 018, 457. That's moving along well, that should be in completion by February of next year. So a lot of good things happening. I would appreciate that the directors, town administrator, and everyone's involved with the implementation of Paycor, everyone really jumped in and helped out. It was, it was a good team effort.
Well, I have to tell you, it's nice, I think it's an added benefit to be able to have an app on your phone for all employees, to be able to hit that button. You can gain your employee handbook, you can, you can get information right away. I think it's another nice tool that we really appreciate bringing it to the team. So I think it's a...
There's also, there's a recognition goal there as well. So we do the employee of the quarter, but the employees can recognize each other and the management, to the employees, anytime on the app or in the system. That's a nice feature and I would recommend the board, when you get a chance, look at that online. You can see some recognitions already being posted.
Very good.
So that's posted for all the employees?
It could be posted for all the employees, or it could be a private message through the system.
And the reason why I say that, your representation here as employees of the quarter, is that put in such a place that their peers or their cohorts or their colleagues can see that and know that? Other than just inside here because we know it here?
Yeah, that's a great thing to bring up, Commissioner. There's a company news section, which is going to be kind of like our place that we do the newsletter, that's going to be based that. And the company news, what I'll probably do this week is post the picture that the town administrator took today, recognizing the ground maintenance crew of their great work and selected the employee of the quarter. So everyone will receive that, see that as well. So that will be in the company news section, so you'll see that. Just like Lieutenant Rogers' walkout on Monday, that was posted on there, so we'll also post those things as well.
Good, thanks.
Great idea. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve Repo, you have a couple of budget amendments.
Yes, I do. The first one is Budget Amendment Number 2023-02, it's to budget $122,932 off of standard allowance for the purpose of purchasing a model year 2022 Ford F-550 regular cab four by four for Department of Public Works.
Well, I have Dan here. Dan, can you tell us exactly what that's going to be used for?
Right? Are you?
Yeah, that truck will replace the current truck that we use for the leaf and grass collection. You know, the current truck now is, I think that's about $2,000, I think it's, no, I think it's $2,008, you know, right around there somewhere, I think. You know, it's getting, you know, that thing runs all day long, every day, subject to the conditions of the, you know, the dust and, you know, from the grass and leaves. So, you know, we're looking to bring that up to par now. You know, there's been many repairs on that truck over the last couple of years, so that will replace the current one.
Well, did you keep the original one anyway, or?
We'll have to, yeah, we'll have to decide on that based on the condition, you know. You know, I guess after we get the new truck. But I would think most likely we'll probably retire it, I would think.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, because what, grass is very corrosive. I mean, the bottom...
I was going to say, is there any, is there any vehicle out there that can take on that type of vegetation?
It's just, I mean, the big thing is...
Like, I'm sorry, like old stringy vegetable plants?
Yes.
Stuff, or is that just ruining it?
Yeah, I mean, basically, the, just the dust and, you know, the, you know, if you see that truck in operation, especially with the, probably a little more so with the leaves, you know, because that, you know, leaf loader that we're using is actually grinding them up while they're, you know, when they're sucking them up. Just a lot, a lot of dust, and that's, you know, pretty harsh shit. So it's not so much like the bed actually that we get now are stainless steel. One of these trucks, the beds hold up well, it's just everything else, it's, you know, as that truck is running, it's sucking in a lot of dust and that kind of thing. Plus it's, plus it's running like all day long, you know, nonstop for, you know, eight hours, eight hours or maybe even a little bit more than that.
So when you do, if somebody has a pile of leaves and then you get in there and there's like other stuff in it, how do you?
I would say, the majority of the time, we don't run into too many issues with leaves or that, but I mean, there, you know, people that are running, they're running every day and they're kind of used to, you know, a lot of time we go in there with that hose, if you've ever seen that running, it's got some pretty good suction to it. But, you know, just the way they go into the piles, they don't just drop that thing down on it because then you'll, you know, you could break something up, you don't want they go into it. The machines are pretty, they're, it's a pretty sturdy machine, but we really don't have too much of a problem with that. But the way they go in with, they kind of stay away so at least they, they watch, they wait until they go back for it, so, you know, they're not just dropping it down on it, so it's...
We've had surprises in the past, unfortunately, so. We've seen rebar, we've seen rocks, we've seen arrowheads, and I tell you what's a problem, that's a pretty quick to take up on that one.
Wow.
But it's the same, it's the same machine as those of the leaves, as those of the grass, so, you know.
But for people with, with plants and vegetation, that has to be taken by the resident down to either the landfill or downtown?
We try to get them to do that, but yeah, not in all cases, but we can, those machines are actually debris loaders, is what they are, so to a certain extent, you know, we can pick some of that stuff up and, you know, I've spent a good bit of time with them in the beginning with the people that are on it now, that, you know, just kind of train them on what they can and how they should do it. So they're pretty versed on, you know, they can, they can pick some of that stuff up. When they have big piles of that and it's real wet and that kind of thing, that really doesn't work, it doesn't like that a whole lot, and it's a block, you know. And it's just like with grass, you know, we used to not really, when it was raining, not pick it up because it was a lot of block, you know, and it just got into training, which you can do it. So they go out and it's raining and pick up, and keeps our schedules on, you know, keeps us on schedule, if we didn't, you can see a lot, I think here in the last couple of years, as you go around, the streets are a lot cleaner, you know, we stick to schedule, we always try to work it to where, you know, we don't, we don't, we have five days a week to pick up, so we try to get as close as we can to picking up in four days. So every day, what, you know, we have them do is get into the next day and round. So if you get into the next day and round, that's success. If you don't, it's like, all right, tomorrow might be a little challenging day, but they usually always do, so, you know, it keeps things on schedule. If you have a lot of rain, heavy rain, well, if it's real bad, we don't, we don't, we really can't go out then, so at least we have a little bit of wiggle rain for that, knowing that, you know, hey, it's going to rain.
We get a keychain trigger too, and that's another story, so.
Brian, is this truck, it'll be equipped with a salt spreader and a plow?
Yes.
That adds additional cost though, because all the trucks we buy, they always include spreaders and plows, because when you need them, you need them. Hopefully, they won't get rusty in the salt this year.
Yeah, this, this truck, this current one, we were looking out to be able to get because they already, they had it, Apple Ford already started building it just for really a showroom truck, but it was a, it was a, you know, the same basic specs as we, we use. Otherwise, right now, you're waiting at least a year on a new truck, so it's, you know...
And the, the bed is done by Moxley, right?
Correct, yeah.
The center, right?
Basically a...
Modified.
Yeah, straight truck or a chassis, and then it's outfitted into a dump truck by Moxley. Yeah, so it'll get a, it'll get a plow and a gate spreader, salt spreader, and then the bed, which is all done by Moxley.
Very good. Any other questions for the board? I think something is needed. We have a motion to approve Budget Amendment 2023-02. So moved. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Will you, I'll have a question about an additional truck here in a second. Steve, you have Budget Amendment 2023-03.
That's correct, that's the budget, $79,500 on our standard allowance for the purpose of the first year of a new account, financial accounting software that we have to go to. The system that we have now is out of support, we're kind of relying, relying on one person who is retired, but is still in touch with us, so it's time to move on, actually it's half time to move on, so we're going to a new system, but the first year will cost $79,500. And that costs, but half goes to general fund, one quarter goes to water fund, one quarter goes to the sewer fund.
Question for you. Of course, the software program that we had for our system has been, we know how old that is, of course, and this is something that I think we budgeted over the last few years, but we never really used it, correct?
That's correct, in the current history, there is no equipment budget, so that's why the budget amendment to go with this, is we just figured a chance to go out and look at other systems, which we did for this, and what we used a system that was recommended by another town within Cecil County, and actually they had also used this other system that we looked at, and he said this was much preferred to them with the customer support being much more readily available than with the other systems, so, and actually this was the lower price of the two.
Very good, I think it's about time. Any questions or comments, guys?
Does that come with any tech support or anything like that?
Yes, and that was what really was the tipping point, that the support there is much more readily available than the other companies that we look for, for the person from town northeast that actually lived through using both systems, so we liked the idea that one was more user-friendly and had more available support. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of Budget Amendment 2023-03?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I should ask for a motion first, so I got, I know I got a motion in there. Who wants to make the motion? All right, Charles gives me the motion, I have a second with Gene Brummel. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Thank you, guys. Dan, I wanted to ask you, one of the, probably one of the vehicles that I love the most in the town has been the vacuum truck. I mean, that's probably one of the more versatile units that we have. I mean, I've seen them putting in signposts with that thing, I've seen them, when they're doing their repair around the, we have a water main break, that thing is there all the time. Now, we did order a new one a couple of years ago, or where?
Yeah, the one you're looking at now was ordered probably about three years ago, three, four years ago.
And that's what we have in use now?
Yes.
Did we get rid of the old one, or?
We saw the old one.
So we still have them both?
Yes.
Is the old one operational, or is it, it's getting on its last legs?
It's getting on the last legs, but it's still operational. If it's a really dirty job, it can actually do some things. Exactly, just getting parts for that particular one, getting difficult, but it's still, it's still a life support, it's still around, so you can...
I would say I'm going to put the ball in your court, if you think it's something that at some point we need to replace, it's on you to tell me, because I think it's a, I think it's a very valuable piece of equipment that we use a lot. And maybe we only need one at a time, and maybe the second one's fine, as it is, but...
The new one, the good thing about the new one, first of all, makes the parade rally, it's just, it was just in the Elkton truck or treat, so, they, people love the vacuum truck. Secondly, is the crew leader in charge of that thing, Ricky Gray, keeps that thing meticulous, so that's, you know, again, I've got a certain crew people, only certain ones do it, and they do keep that machine up pretty well, so...
What's the life of one of those?
Maybe fifteen to twenty years. The main thing is they maintain it very well, so that's what comes after, they're constantly cleaning, you have to see which one, so that's why it looks the way it does, because only certain people can access it.
What's it going to cost?
Maybe $500,000.
It's a lot of dollars.
That's why, that's why it's very meticulous, is what we have, so...
A lot of dollars. Dan, one of the things you want to mention is the camera crew also. Because they work, there's a crew of people...
Same crew.
That are dedicated to looking at water, I mean, sewer and stormwater too, I said, that's what they're doing.
Yeah, the same, the same crew that does the vacuum truck, they also take care of like all the, all the daily maintenance. We, the board would share us enough to get us into the new package on that one, so we actually have a camera. It was, if you see, it's like a square looking van, has a camera inside that, we actually camera the entire sewer, we actually, we can even camera everything, so. It takes about, I think it was over like, like, by five years, we have like eighty, eighty-five miles of main, by the time we're done everything, we actually see all the different pieces, it takes a couple of years to do that. We clean it up and we document it, if there's any breaks, any repairs, we do it. So if you look at the number of, as I lost prevention revenue, it works out very good that way because you have those sewer, sewer backups going to house, and so that, you know, the mains are constantly making that work. So that's a good job.
Well, thank you.
What's that?
Not yet. Maybe. We might. I'm going to wait for Dan to tell me. Okay, Lou, you're on.
Okay, the, I have Gene here. Ordinance 5, 2022, was Amendment to the zoning ordinance, was introduced on October 19th, and we're accepting it for adoption. It's subject to adoption today, and this amends the permissible use of, for light construction, manufacturing, I mean, and C3BI and other zones, and there are conditions. Gene, you want to explain the ramifications of this amendment?
Yes, as I explained previously, the ordinance will amend the language in the C2 zone, highway commercial zone, to allow light industrial, plate manufacturing use as a component of research and development that uses.
I have to tell you, I know we accepted it for introduction and we're going to do it for adoption, and I think it was a great move for that facility. We're going to get the world premier manufacturer of, I guess, the collagen bandages and, I tell you, that's a treat for our community, I tell you, that's a, they're a standard, I mean, it's a, it's a great, going to be a great addition to the town of Elton. We have a motion to accept the ordinance 5-2022, it's presented for adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion? And a second? Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Gene, for the work.
Okay, the next item I have is Proclamation 35, 2022 Municipal Government Works Act. We get this from the Maryland Municipal League, proclamation of the Maryland Commissioners Town of Elton declaring the month of November 2022 Municipal Government Works Month in the town of Elton. Whereas the town of Elton has established Cecil County seat 1787, and has evolved to Cecil County's largest and most progressive municipality. Whereas Elton joins 156 other municipalities in Maryland to proudly serve their respective residents and business communities. Whereas the municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to direct access to their elected officials, observe the operations of the government, and benefit from the many services provided by their government, and as some of those were explained by Dan this morning, with the, day with the sewer crew that I'm talking about. And in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation in town of Elton, is proud to promote municipal government awareness. Whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents by providing essential governmental services, maintaining access to safe drinking water, providing for wastewater treatment, maintaining parks, and supporting recreation facilities, promoting economic development and job opportunities, and supporting local businesses along with providing many other services, and opportunity to help make Maryland a great place to live, work, and enjoy. Now therefore be approved, claimed by the Maryland Commissioners of the Town of Elton at the month of November 2022 Municipal Government Works Month.
We have a motion to approve Proclamation P-35-2022 Municipal Government Works Month. So, got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Action carries.
We had a second proclamation, but that's been withdrawn. So the next item I have is memorandum of understanding, I sent this to the board and I, I assume that the board received it. In conjunction with the Maryland 7 upgrade by the Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration, for the construction of sidewalks and a pedestrian bridge on Maryland 7 between, or they call it Maryland 281, but that's Main Street, and Maryland 7D is Delaware Avenue, so from Main Street down to disappoint south of the bridge over the Big Elk, this act, this work will take place. The MOU provides the town, for the town to cooperate with the state highway, and I'm sure that we will, and we have so far, and provides for certain responsibilities by the town to facilitate this particular project. Some of the activities we've already done, thanks to Michelle and working with state highway, we have got rights of entry. I think everyone has...
And thanks to you, everyone.
Yeah, well, we had to, had to do a little field work to get one of them, but fortunately I just, they never went. We have all the, we have all the rights of entry, which is important in order for this to occur. And in conjunction with this, also, because some of the work is being done in a critical area buffer, the state is going to pay the town $12,397.50 in payment of blue money for work in the critical area buffer. And I think Gene's responsible for figuring out how to spend that money.
Well, where trees have to be planted. A certain amount of trees that have to be planted, and we have to find locations in the buffer to plant them.
Anyway, we'll, we'll do that. Among other things, there's a lot of little things in here, but what's important part is that once this sidewalk and the pedestrian bridge is constructed, constructed, we'll own it, we'll own that bridge. That's one of the requirements here. So we'll be glad to own it, I'm just glad to have it built. And so I would ask the board to accept the MOU with the Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration, so we get this sidewalk and that pedestrian bridge done. I think they want to start work next spring, so, spring of 2023. So theoretically, it'll be done before, I think it'll probably take several months.
The Gene Brummel bridge?
Don't you dare.
That's what we got. Well, listen, do we have a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding for the Maryland Route 7 Delaware Avenue Design and Construction of Improvements from 281 to south of the Big Elk Bridge? Got a motion? And a second? Any discussion on this, other than?
No, I don't like it.
I know, I know Gene doesn't like it, we wanted a, a whole new bridge with the pedestrian, I agree with her, and, but you know something, we've fought a long ways here to get this pedestrian bridge, and I think that pedestrian bridge will save lives.
It's better than, it's better than what we have.
It will, it will save a life. I, I remember when we started talking about this, it was, Steve McGowan told me that he got bumped there walking one day across that bridge by a car, and I'm sure, the only reason he told me, he was a little embarrassed to tell me that he got bumped as he was pushing his bike across there. that he got bumped as he was pushing his bike across there. But I'm sure he's not the only one that's probably has been bumped a little bit. Or been very fortunate.
The state won't replace the bridge for some reason. Like they say, it's adequate for the traffic load on that, on that street. So I tried to have them do that, but they, they won't do it.
Maybe someday. Okay, any other discussion on this?
Now, that one you can maybe.
All in favor? Motion carries. All right, we'll name the second man.
Okay, the next item I have is memorandum of understanding with the Cecil County government. The town is on the precipice of issuing special obligation bonds for the Southfield Special Taxing District. And in conjunction with that, council has prepared an MOU between the town and Cecil County in order for the county to collect the special tax. In conjunction with that special taxing district that will exist, already exists actually, but there's no development there. And of course, Steve has contacted the county and they believe that they can do, or they've accepted the fact that they can do the special tax because they already collect the real property taxes in the town of Elton. Anyway, I think they collect the real property tax. So this would just be an additional thing for them to collect. And, but the formality is to have this, because the other writers require us to have an MOU with a collection agency such as Cecil County. So this has been sent to the county and I believe that the Massey's latest communication to me is that we'll bring it up for the county council. And I would ask the board to tentatively approve the MOU as it exists today for the county to collect the special taxes in addition to the real property taxes that currently collects from the properties within that special taxing district.
We have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Cecil County Finance Department Special Taxing District presented for adoption. Got a motion, a second, any discussion? I guess the only comment I would make is, is that, you know, when we, when we decide to do the special taxing district, fortunate thing was, this doesn't affect any of our existing residents in our town. And I'd love to see some new residents involved in this because I know we're, we're getting so close. We're getting so close to the finish line on this thing. And once again, you know, we talked earlier about the, the vision of the cross-country races in town, and this has been a vision of ours, this project of Southfields. And we're so close, we're so close. Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Motion carries.
The only other thing I would mention unofficially, so to speak, is the fact that the Elton Violet disinfection system that is being installed in the water treatment plant is, is underway. Took a long time to get the equipment, but there's actually contractors on site right now installing, you know, disassembling certain piping and then to install new piping with the U V system. So that'll be done. And also, Wellhouse four, that's moving along as scheduled. So we've been working on that project too.
And Lou, how many additional gallons are we pulling from Artesian for those five or six days that we were down with the U V?
Well, we're down now nine hundred forty-six thousand today, or yesterday. Pretty close to a million gallons.
Yeah, it's a lot of water we're pulling from the Artesian interconnect. But you know, I have to tell you, that's why you have those interconnects. This is exactly why you have them. And if we didn't have the interconnect, I'm not sure if we would be able to supply our town with water, like doing a project like this.
We have to buy a lot of bottled water.
It would have been. So I think over the years, I, I have to say, the first interconnect was put in in what year? Charlie, you were here.
Oh, I got two thousand eight.
What year was it, Leo?
Two thousand nine, April two thousand nine.
Somewhere, yeah, two thousand nine.
And I know Charlie and Earl were the two on the board when that was voted in. And, and I have to tell you, it was a great move to vote that in because it, it really has, you guys, I'm gonna say your foresight has made a difference because these, these things wouldn't have been able, today, what you did in two thousand nine made a difference for what we're doing today.
And you know, back there, when you're talking and discussing it and weighing the pros and cons, you don't, or didn't actually see the impact as you were saying that, but you actually see it.
You see it today, what you did then, and it's, and there's a, a lot of discussion, why are you doing this, or why are we doing that? And today, you can absolutely see what we had that interconnect involved.
Well, not only in the case when the plant is out offline, but the plant reduces its output when we have high turbidity raw water. So we draw a higher amount of water from Artesian during high turbidity events too. So it's, it's a critical interconnection we have with Artesian.
And it was, and the one that goes back to my mind from about four years ago is when both those pumps went out at the same time. And if we didn't have that interconnect, it makes decisions easier to make when you have those things in place, let me put it that way. It's not crises anymore, it's just managing to make it happen. But great job. Charles, I know you made that motion when you put it in. Thank you. Earl, I know you seconded it back then. Or was it your idea? Was it? It was probably. Great job. I wanted to bring the board up to date a little bit on a couple of things. One was the rental ordinance. Couple meetings ago, I was gaining information and I had, Michelle has been assisting me with this. We reached out to the city of Newark and we're gonna be receiving that. We had to fill out a, a request form to get that information. So that should be hitting us anytime. City of Frederick, who I also, or who we also, also reached out to, their rental ordinance doesn't go into effect until January twenty-four. So we won't really have that until all the amendments are done back and forth with their council. So we'll have that pretty soon. But the one that really has hit home with me more so than any of them is Cecil County. Cecil County currently has a rental ordinance in place for their section eight housing. And I think I sent that over to the board initially. Once we get all the, all the other municipalities together, I think when you read that section eight one, that's kind of basically all I'm asking for, to make sure that the house is livable, everything works. And I think if we can go along those lines, I think we've really accomplished something. So it may not be as difficult as we thought it was gonna be other than figuring out how we're gonna man it to make those things happen. But I think that we can get some things in place. So I wanted to let the board know, the team is working on it. Lou, you sent over a, or Lou or Steve sent over our commitments with ARPA as a, sat, I think as of yesterday. And is, is there, was there a projection? I, I think I sat in a meeting several months ago and we were kind of jotting down how much of that money that we thought that we were gonna use. Where are we at with that? What, what's our ballpark number? Do you think if we did all the projects that was on that list, are we?
Well, we don't know so far as the cost of an interconnect on Route forty. It's gonna be very expensive. And also, we don't have a cost yet on the force mains that'll be in Upper Chesapeake Corporate Center. Cleaned out of medicine, we'll have a high demand of water. When they're fully developed. And obviously, that'll require a collection system upgrade too. So there's, there's probably two or three million right there. My guess is, maybe, maybe slightly more. I'm not sure where we stand with other projects right now.
Well, I guess what my question is, we feel pretty sure that we'll be able to spend all that at least on infrastructure and so forth, correct? Or do you think we'll?
Well, we'll be tapping into some of that for a stand, so-called standard allowance too. We have a budget in the current, near like two point three million dollars for that. And we don't know where last year ended until we get the audit, which will be later this fall.
Very good. Lou, we had an initial discussion with the water tower that's gonna be built next to Wellhouse four. I know that the developer, and I'll get more information, but I just wanted to kind of lay this out there. I know we had some emails going back and forth. Did we commit to any dollars for keeping it at the six hundred thousand gallon capacity? Remember they were looking at?
That's not my, my project is a well four project, but Southfield took the.
They did.
On that one, so I'm not sure where they are for that.
Yeah, I know, I know that, that what I was told last week before I went away that there was, they have, the tank is on order and they ordered a six hundred thousand gallon tank. But I, I had some emails going back and forth with them, so I just wanted to make the board where they were wanting to shrink the size down to meet the needs of that neighborhood and not meet the rest of what I felt the other. And there, and there was emails going back and forth. Lou was included in those. I know you were included in them. But we never made any decisions. But I, at that point, I said, well, let's see what, if there is a difference or is, or isn't a difference.
Do you look at Gene's fancy that one?
No, Lou and I was included in them. We were going back, it was back several months ago.
It's my understanding that there was a question of emphasis and after discussion with KCI and MRA, it was determined that the six hundred thousand gallons is what we needed.
Yeah, I stood firm on that. I mean, they were pouncing back emails with me and I said, absolutely, we're building the six hundred thousand. I think they thought they could go down to a four fifty or a five hundred based on that area. And then with the cost of the, the steel and everything else that was going up, I think the total project now is three and a half or four million dollars to build that tower. And that's where it was. You remember, if you remember in our initial room here, I think they, two years ago, they thought that they could get it done for two and a half million.
Yeah, but eventually you're gonna need that extra capacity.
Without question. And I stood, I stood right behind that and I told them, no, you're not gonna shrink the size of that tower now. So I'll try to get more information with that. In fact, I think we, well, we won't see, we won't see them today. But it'll be in front of us on November sixteenth, the Southfields group. And I think that that's a great question that we should have in our list of questions to ask them about that water tower. Where are they at with it? Where are we, where are we standing at with the power? We've got Wellhouse four built and we don't have any power to it. I mean, little things like that, and they're not so little, but where are they at? You know, where are they at with this?
They're, they're guessing. My last communication with Southfield's people was that they probably wouldn't have power to our wellhouse till November twenty-three. So it's a year away. And I've already notified Wickersham because they'll probably have to demobilize and then remobilize or what, figure out a way of dealing with it. And also, I communicated with, around part of the environment that even though we have a permit for that well, we probably won't exercise the use of it until we have water, infrastructure connected to it, sewer infrastructure connected to it, and power connected to it.
Would you wanna put a generator on, or we're gonna have a backup generator on it?
We have a, Larry ordered a generator a year, over a year ago. But the generator could be used just to test something. But you can't run it on that because you have nowhere to pump the water or deal with wastewater from it. You have analyzers and everything that use water all the time and discharge it into the sewer. So you don't have any of that availability. Anyway, we'll have the wellhouse done. It's a very sophisticated project, about one point four million.
I have to tell you, you did a fantastic job with it.
So far, it's pretty good.
Fantastic job. Lot of money for a little. While we're on that subject of down at Southfields, the Gene Minter and I are gonna have a meeting today with the folks from Critical Area at three o'clock. And there's a multiple vision. One of the, when you originally looked at the Southfields project, I'm gonna say going back before it was called Southfields and when I was trying to do the largest sportsplex in North America. On that site, if, if you guys remember, we actually had an RV park, a very high-end RV park on the original drawings. There's about fifty-eight acres toward the rear of the project that has a lot of issues. I mean, there's a critical area, there's forestation issues, there's a lot of high grades, low grades. But you know, if it's possible, I went to the developer and I told him, I wanna see that high-end campground RV park in the rear of that property. And I just think it'd be a great amenity for the, the sportsplex, for the, the whole community. And so they've drawn up a few things and we're gonna meet with the folks from Critical Area, see if there's any, any way that those things can go. Along with that, which I sent over to the board about the Frenchtown Wharf, I'm gonna call it the Frenchtown Wharf Park, which there would be ten, fifteen acres, ten to fifteen acres subdivided off of that section, which would be donated by the Southfields project for the town of Elton. And, and if anyone's ever been down to that old Frenchtown Wharf, and I think Louis was down there yesterday and sent everyone a photograph of it. The area, it depends whose eyes you look at, because Lou brought up a good point today. He said, you know, in his eyes, it's a beautiful area as it is. It's nature at its best. But what I see there, the vision I see is an area that people from, we, we, we have an opportunity to be part of the water community for the town of Elton. And I also see a regional park that has an opportunity to host a lot of families down there. I, I see birth amphitheater for local artists to play music during the sunset. I see pavilions down there similar to Meadow Park that our residents and county residents and state residents could go down and, and rent, lease them out. I see areas for kayak rentals, for people to take out kayaks and, and go along the Big Elk Creek. And I also see, which is probably, once again, the, one of the toughest parts of it is that I see some dredging, I see some shoreline restoration, and I see tens of thousands and of tons of sand pumped down there to where we have one of the most beautiful beaches in Cecil County that people could come to. Now, once again, is these things pie in the sky? Yeah, they're kind of a pie in the sky, but we're gonna find out a little bit, maybe, can we do these things or we can't do these things? And if we can do these things, then it's great. Now, to add to that, I sent in a letter to the Secretary Brinkley asking for eight million dollars in assistance on the old Frenchtown Wharf Park to be put into Governor Hogan's supplemental budget. That should be in his hands now. All they can do is say no, right? That's all they can say. And, but we gotta keep moving forward with those things. So that's my vision, our vision, hopefully, that we all see the same thing I can see. And, but I'm pretty excited about it, quite frankly. I think it's something that for years, we've always, we've always been the town of Elton with as much water that we got going through our town. And yet, it seems like a lot of the other municipalities we try to compare ourselves to because they always say, well, you don't have any water. We've got plenty of water, we just don't know how to use our water yet. And this is a step forward. So that's just to bring the town board up to date with everything. But I did, we've all responded back. I think you all saw the email about the Frenchtown Wharf project. And the board all responded with a very positive email to me about it. So I just wanted to let everyone. let everyone else be aware that these are things that we're moving forward. And I know we have a lot of obstacles, but I know we can get through them. And then the last thing I had, I wanted to compliment the state highway. I'm very pleased with the old Bonham Park by David. Have we heard anything different to that? I think it looks great. It looks like they're cutting out some sections in the center to put reflective material in, which I think is wonderful. So very happy about that. With that, Gene, it's yours. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about this then, and I think you touched on all of it. The only thing I had a question about, have we done anything on South Street Extension at all, or are we sitting on this?
South Street's sitting on it.
They're sitting on it.
Because it involves the acquisition of the eight to 10 properties there.
By different owners?
Oh, yeah.
Eight to 10 different owners?
Mm-hmm.
Or...
I don't know how far the board wants to push this project. I think it's very extensive.
Well, certainly you can't stop. And if you've got those properties there, then what's the worth of them in order for us to continue moving forward or looking forward? I mean, those properties could go for little or nothing. What could they possibly? Not that you're going to ramrod somebody to get it, but what the owners, who they are now, what could they get if they just sit there?
It's up to the board. If the board wants to open this project again, I'll engage council to work with me, or work with us, to acquire all these properties. It'll take quite a bit of time.
I'm going with them. We want to acquire them. Because we... I didn't know it was close to being...
Some might be estates and everything, that's what I'm saying. I think some of the owners are not necessarily alive. So Lou, I would say yes, the town wants to move forward with the South Street Extension, and you'll work with John to get those properties.
At least some information.
John is very serious.
Right? Just some information, what we're doing, what we're doing.
All right, next, Gene?
That was it.
All right, Charles?
Any new changes with the trice for next week in which they start a new format?
Well, we're looking forward to the change, and we'll see what happens. You know, basically, it's three days to two, and we'll start on Monday, we'll have conversations, and we'll see what goes in there.
Because I know some of the trice drivers said that the company has not mentioned anything to them. Of course, they have a meeting the day before, I guess, where they're all going to be called and talking about something, whether it is, I don't know. But I was asking you just in case.
I spoke to one of the drivers of the crew when I was at South Street and about the single tow pickup, and they were aware of it. So I was surprised that you hadn't been told.
This is their operations role. Your operations will address it themselves.
Yeah, I didn't speak my bean about it, other than normal stuff, but I actually talked to somebody driving a trice truck.
Well, being sales, but you've got an operational, you've got a little facet, so.
Because I know one of the drivers, one of the trucks mentioned the fact that they're still hiring people, because, you know, some of the employees come one day, and they may be going after five days, or therefore you've got to hire somebody to drive, and that can be difficult.
Yeah.
And particularly with them learning not to pick the bags off of the ground and once they're down there. Second, I hope is I was fortunate to be in the presence of repaying Larry Waldritz the other day. It was very moving, and not that you don't see tears coming out of your eyes, but Larry certainly had it. I guess, you know, sometime you can say, "This is my last day," and then you go out and see a reflection of all those tears. And, you know, you don't come into contact with those people every day, the whole environment changes. And thank you, Chief, for what you did to make it successful as it was with the lunch and everything else. Mr. Rodriguez, was there an employee, and I asked before, who you talked with concerning the police department? Was there any follow-up to that?
Oh, the one cadet? I mean, excuse me, the one applicant?
Yes.
Oh, yes. That was submitted to one of the officers that helps with recruitment, so that is in the works right now.
He's being invited to our next testing.
Okay, that's the answer I wanted to hear. So he doesn't get us in the way.
No, absolutely not.
There's a... For your information, there's a local person there that went to school at Alton High School, has an interest in being in the police department, so now they're setting their hands to make that happen.
Fantastic.
Right. And that's it.
Thank you, Charles.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Based on Charlie. The ball pickup, is it once a month or once every 30 days?
We want... Our program is call up to schedule it, and then we'll... It depends on how it works out. You know, it could be one area a week, it could be once a month. That's what we're trying to work through with waste management right now.
Wow.
The main thing, if they call up, we'll get back with them. That's what we're trying to do, and schedule what's the most efficient way of doing it. There are a couple different ideas we're playing with right now. We're going to see how this switch over takes over with the residents, and then we'll have a better idea how to be efficient. So we'll address our needs, we'll wear it another, but we'll be dressed.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Earl?
I'm first off, like Sam. Sorry I didn't attend. I wasn't able to attend Lieutenant Waldritz's exit, but wishing well in his sense in his future. Also, really a road. I'm thankful, and thankful all the people that had any input in getting that road up and running and getting back to the best condition, because I did have a lot of complaints about that. There's two things I have on the item for the community center. I'll wait until maybe November 16th to bring a report of what's going on over at the community center and update on that. But I would like to either ask Michelle if you could reach out to Bernard Purdy, because I promise that we're going to try to get something up and running for a concert by Mr. Purdy. And we'll maybe starting another scholarship fund for Elton students, right? Well, we'll give more history on that, but last year he came and done something for us over at the community center, really update, turn that, and we wanted to make it bigger and maybe profitable for the students here in Cecil County. So I would ask that if Michelle could reach out to Bernard and just say, "What is a good time we could probably set something up, sit and talk?" And then we would like to include the Elton High School if we can use their gym for the concert. Then we can get back with details on what we want to go forward for that, because there was a lot of input after it. He ended that same day.
I don't want to... I'll interject it. I vaguely remember something toward after that event, did Mrs. Purdy reach out to us?
Yes, we had a discussion of that.
And then we asked her to... She had to form her... Was it like a 501(c)(3) or some type of?
No, no. I had a contact at Elton High School for scholarships.
Okay.
I just promised that we was going to get something in place to return to him.
Perfect.
All right, and I think that's it for me. And I have an update on November 16th for the community center.
Could you do it today?
Yeah, I can do it right now.
Just kidding.
Anyway.
I hope you don't lie because...
I would like to reiterate Charles' statements about Officer Waldritz's walkout. It was a beautiful thing. You could see the emotion in Larry, as well as some of the other officers, and the chief, and just everybody, you know. And that man went around, shook everybody's hand, and hugged everybody. I was last on the line in that. I don't feel too good today. But that was a very nice thing, and I'm sorry I couldn't stick around for the lunch.
We are meeting next Tuesday, correct, Michelle? 15th with Chris Beakrath from Underwater Associates about the flood control. I just want to remind everybody about that. I think we should all be there if we can. 9:00 AM, out back in my shop, out by Eden Park, on the creek. We're going to show him that burst and that area that floods. He is not really witness to what we have here, so I'm very interested in seeing him see our situation. Remember, we're going to take him upstream, up toward Meadow Park and Swifties, and then behind your house, I guess, when you're going to be there?
The 15th, yes.
Yes. That should be a very good meeting, and I have high hopes for this company to alleviate some of our flooding. Other than that, I... Two or three weeks ago, I had a talk with some Cub Scouts on community service and military service. It was very well received. The kids were very intelligent. They asked the best questions. And it seemed to light a fire under a couple of them. You know, we may have a couple of future leaders come out of that. I would like to see us do more along those lines. I would like to see us as a board, and maybe some of other of our community leaders, like the chief and Louis, and, you know, just as many as we can get together and take this to the middle school and the high school, and have them in the auditorium and give that talk on what it means to be a community server, you know, a servant of your community, the rewards, and how good it is for the community itself. You know, I think it'd be important to maybe try to recruit some people, because we're not going to be around forever. And then, do we have any thoughts on this? Can we make this move forward? Yeah, I think we, a few years ago, I think that... Actually, I think that Charlie's always went to the schools and talked, and I think Louis went, did a presentation a couple of years ago. Mr. Lemon kind of brought that up to us. We've been going on their request. If they request us to come in, we've gone in. Have we put together a road show that we could take and make that up? We haven't. Might not be a bad idea. We all do our part of the play and make a presentation.
Did you say high school? High school?
High school. I'd like to do middle school and high school. I mean, these are Cub Scouts. These were... Are they middle school kids?
That's boys.
Depends.
Elementary.
Scouts are usually the younger ones.
Very, very young.
Yeah.
I thought it'd be nice to reach out.
We have now reached for elementary school. We've done that. I think Sydney does that.
Yeah. Elementary was, they're like...
That's why I said he's good. We've done that, we've done the trucks out, Rob, we've done my own.
That they like. They don't want to listen about what a mayor or commissioner is. We do tours, we do tours through the police department, too, for the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts.
If no one has any objections, I might just get this ball rolling by contacting the principal at Elton High and the principal of middle school.
Those would be your contacts. If they were in terms, you know, determine the segment of age groups of classes, and then they'd have to be permitted by the board, but it shouldn't be a problem.
All right. I will keep you all informed on how that goes. Thank you, Rob.
I think Commissioner Givens probably is the best one to address it. Did they have an issue with their scheduling? And as long as I was up there, it was very critical about, you know, when they change classes and all those types of things that we had to kind of work in.
They have certain A days and B days, and...
Yeah.
It's something that you would need to discuss, because, you know, then you have some teachers who have concerns about even taking a kid out of class for an hour, but, you know, once the principal puts a green light on it, they go accept.
Yeah, I think if we went to a certain classroom and just had one group of kids, not the whole bunch, you can't take the whole bunch out of there. Nowadays, I don't even know if you can get into school, you know, with the security they have now.
Civic.
Why the police?
There you go.
Well, I'll contact the principals today.
Sure.
Thank you. Get that ball rolling. This is the time of the meeting. We open up the floor for anyone who has anything to say, for the good of the town. Ms. Pat?
I was going to ask, Rob, you said you were going to be welcoming some people up and down the creek in the flood areas. Of course, maybe the whole board can answer this. Are they ever going to do anything with the small forest that's growing right next to the Delaware Avenue Bridge?
The small what?
Forest, because it is now turned into a forest. It's not just one tree.
Oh, the sandbar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just getting bigger. Eventually, there's not going to be anything that's going to flow through there. It's going to be completely blocked.
No, it'll never be blocked. It scours out an area. Now, I sent a thing to the board about that already, that if you want to address the sandbar, we'll do it after they build that bridge. I do not want to have anything interfere with that, because if I send something to MDE about permit, and say a highway gets windowed, they may suspend that project. We'll worry about it afterwards.
So Pat, just a little bit of history that we've learned up here over the years, that I'm going to say maybe might have been right at the... I think it was even before Louis. BL, we'll call it before Louis, I think the town would rent this big tractor with these big air tires on it, and they would go up and down the Big Elk Creek and move all that debris out. And today, you just can't do those things, and you've got to go through the permitting and the other part that we're running across. And I've had discussions with Lou, and this whole board has had them about that island, because it's an isolate. It looks terrible, it looks like crap, and it's not something that I think is in the best interest of the town of Elton. Now, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, right?
Okay.
And some people believe that that looks beautiful, the way it is, and then some people believe it's an isolate. I think that with us getting the guy I need that Rob was just talking about, Chris, he's going to kind of come on board and guide us through those things, and he'll work with the permitting on forests and those type of issues. But as long as it's not blocking the flow of the water to the plant, it's not really a high priority item, I think, in the MDEs on ice. We've got the Army Corps there, and we've got Critical Area, and we've got four or five different entities. But if it was me, if my name was Dan Hanley and I had a backhoe, I would probably just make a scoop every once in a while. Now, I would never say that to you. I am not saying that to you.
Not what you speak of.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, we got one, Chief. Go ahead, Chief.
I just wanted to let the board know that I met with the governor's office representative earlier this week, and the legislature passed where 10 different coordinators, and they're called protect coordinators, are being placed across the state, and Elton is one of those, and will be sharing a full-time, state-funded employee with the Cecil County Sheriff's Office. And that person is going to be used to mobilize community resources, maybe assist with grants, maybe help make sure we're using all different crime prevention programs. We were hoping that if we could house them a little short and help an office space over there, maybe we could use your old office there for...
100%, if you can get it from Andy.
Okay, I've talked to Andy. I've got it clear to Andy, and importantly, Renee. But so they didn't have any applicants for Cecil County, and they have to be a Cecil County resident? So we were looking, and so if you know of anybody, it's a state-funded position, it's full-time permanent position, it's not contractual. We just wanted to share that with the board. So I don't know exactly what that's going to look like and when that's going to happen, but they're pushing. Some counties, they've already done interviews and things, and we will be part of the interview process, too, with the Sheriff's Department all night. And also, just let you know that I know the board's probably received at least some numbers of... We received complaints about a resident in 300 button woodwork in that area, and we have worked with John's office, and we served an injunction out there today. And the actual owner of the property is under contract to sell that property. So hopefully, that will... It's been a huge nuisance for the residents out there, for the police department, so we're really excited about that. It's probably on the level of the 189rd Road, so just give you some...
Swam.
Add some success. That's it, please.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I just have one more comment. I helped with the Halloween parade last Friday night in Elton, and it was a great event. Everybody really enjoyed it. And I want to thank Dan and his workers for the assistance that the public works gave us to make that go look very smoothly.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Don't let Dan, you keep... Don't be going there. Dan, if you keep getting these accolades and these meetings, you're gonna be taking somebody's job. Somebody else will be aware.
It was supposed to be mine, it's the other way too. It's, I doubt.
Thank you, Pat. I forgot about the Halloween parade was what, it was well done.
And, and I did mention to Larry Waldrich, John's out of town, that flew back from San Diego last evening, so...
He was aware. I had explained to him in advance that Lou was not gonna be able to make it, so no. He was so emotional, I don't know how much he realized.
He may think I was there. Okay, motion to close the meeting.
Closed. Adjourned or closed?
We are adjourned.